Potential roles. It also became equally clear that the interests of the Village of Truensburg will be best served not by an appointment based on objects or politics, but by the appointment of an individual with the desire to serve all of the interests of the village. An individual who wants to grow into an office that requires a need to learn and absorb the intricacies of municipal governance, and an individual who accepts the reality that this board and its members play an important role in the effective day-to-day management of the village. Keith Hannan, my selection for village trustee, checks all of these proverbial boxes, having spent the better part of the last year learning about every level of municipal government, examining the duties and responsibilities therein, and also coming to realize the important place that Truensburg holds in our region. This selection also rounds out a board which should ideally be a balanced representation of our community, not based on opinions of the hot topic of the day, but based on everything that the people of this village are. People who have lived here for over three decades, raising families in the process. People who call Truensburg their childhood home and are now putting roots down even further, and people who have found their home here relatively recently. This reflection of the makeup of the community will provide both the balance as well as the differences between the past, present, and future that the Village of Truensburg needs as it looks to blend its heritage with its evolution. Therefore pursuant to the authority vested in the office of mayor by New York State law, I hereby appoint Mr. Hannan to the vacant position of village trustee. If the clerk would administer the oath.
I, Keith Hannan, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee according to the best of my ability.
That's it?
You're allowed to clap today?
I'm sorry.
Are we allowed to clap today?
You're allowed to clap anytime you want. Unless it's for Tammy, then you're not allowed to clap.
Right, you're not allowed. I won't accept that.
A handful of other mayoral appointments under item one which are not subject to board approval. Deputy Mayor will remain Deb Watkins. Trustee commissions over village departments. Fire will be Ben Darfler. EMS and youth, Ben Carver. DPW water sewer, Deb Watkins. Police, Keith Hannan. We have a few outside organizations. Tompkins County Council of Governments, Hannan will be our representative there. I will remain the representative on the County Health Consortium as its vice chair. And we had previously had a specific chamber liaison, a liaison in the Truensburg Chamber. We had held that position for several years, and a few years ago we got away from it. I think it's important that we reinstate that. There are a few things later on in the agenda that I think will work best if we work more closely with the chamber. And I've asked Keith to be the village representative. Moving on to item two on the agenda, slate of officers. These are all subject to board approval. And I will read through them all, and then I think, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't vote to accept them all at once unless anyone else on the board thinks we should split it up for any reason. Village clerk will be Tammy Morse. Village treasurer, Vicky Babelanti. Those are two-year appointments. The records management officer by law is the village clerk, but police records access officer by law is the police chief, who is Tom Beretti. Budget officer by law is the village treasurer. Receiver of taxes by law is the village clerk. Our zoning officer and village planner will be Matt Johnston. Code enforcement, fire inspection, Tom Myers. Village attorney, Guy Crowe of Thaler &amp; Thaler. Our official bank and depository is the Tompkins Trust Company. We have three official newspapers, the Ethica Journal, Truensburg Free Press, and the Tompkins Weekly. Our village historian is Sandy List. Our youth program director, Tom Major. Our youth commission representative, John Gregory. On the planning board, existing members who do not require additional approval, Rick Geiger is our chair, Anna Carver, John Alberd, and Jessica Giles. Victoria Romanoff has been on the planning board, and her seat, her term was up this year, and she's graciously agreed to stay on the planning board, so she would be my choice for reappointment to that board for a five-year term. ZBA, Tim Hamilton is the chair, Neil Henninger, Michael Schlossberg, Scott Sheevly, and Phil Carubias' term was up this year, and he as well as graciously agreed to stay on for a five-year appointment. Our marriage officers are the mayor, the deputy mayor, and Jessica Giles of the planning board is agreed to be a third marriage officer, so that if anyone does want to get married in the village, we have options for them, unless any other board members would like to. Have we got the issue?
No.
All right, then if there are no changes that anyone on the board would like to make, then I would accept the motion to approve the full slate of officers for the 2018-2019 year.
Motion.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? If not, then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Slate of officers is approved. Item three on the agenda is our meeting schedule, second Monday of every month, with the exception of October and November. I don't know if we want to try to pick a date this far out for those dates, if we want to wait till we get closer. Those are both holidays, those second Mondays. We now move into, continuing on item three, we have our meetings. Definition, all of this comes directly from state law, special meetings forum, executive sessions, agenda, voting, minutes. Order of business has shifted slightly. And you'll notice under item two, changes to the agenda. I've decided that our agenda will be set Friday by 1:00 when the village office closes. There won't be any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda over the weekend. If there are additions or changes to the agenda, we'll make them at the top of the meeting. We're also going to move our approval of minutes up front, and then everything else remains substantially the same. Number four, freedom of information law, also is taken from New York State law. Our advanced approval of claims and procurement process remain unchanged from last year. Mileage allowance attendance at schools and conferences, shared public work services agreements, and our procurement policy also remain unchanged from last year. I would make one comment about our meeting rules, which are actually on the very last page. You'll notice there is no prohibition against clapping. No. I noticed that that was for you. A couple of minor changes, maybe not so minor changes. Under the general rules of procedure, the second section of the meeting rules, we've always operated loosely under Robert's Rules of Order, but that was never mentioned in the meeting rules. I've included that for clarity. And then we're making some changes to the guidelines for privilege of the floor, or public comment period. Previously, we'd always require speakers to state their name and their address for the record. We're removing the need to state the address. I have some concerns about privacy issues if someone wants to stand up and say something, but they may not want to let their residents be known, you know, where they live, especially as we're taping meetings and looking to go with a live stream in the future. The section immediately under that will be important, and this is a significant change. We've always limited speakers to three minutes. Someone made a comment to me a few weeks ago, and I think the point was well made, that when you limit individuals' time to speak, that can have an implication that you would just assume they hurry up to finish. What we're going to try on an experimental basis is to limit the total time for public comment, depending on the size of the audience. It will generally be 15 minutes, but individuals will be able to take as much time as they want of that 15 minutes. If someone uses up all of the 15 minutes, then unfortunately everyone else will have to wait till the next public comment period later in the meeting or the next meeting. So as a courtesy to everyone around you, it makes sense to say what you have to say and take the time you need to say it, but understand that there are others who would be waiting to speak. We are also going to be giving preference to village residents first. Village residents should have preference to speak first during the public comment period, and so we're going to give that a try. And so unless there's any comment from the board, I would accept and entertain a motion to approve the remainder of the annual organizational meeting from items three through items nine.
I would like to add an item. I mean, just like in the first place.
All right, motion in a second. Any discussion?
I have an item on here to sort it. Please introduce. I think we did break it on the village.
We will add that, momentarily, and add two other additions.
I thought last year we, I had added that under the part about paying bills, that we added credit cards and everything with an actual due date that we were going to get a late charge on. And if I didn't then, can we add that to that?
Say it a different way.
Okay, the advanceable claim. I was wondering if we could add credit cards or any type of account that has a due date that will charge a late charge if we don't pay that a due date, like Gannett has that for credit cards. And I thought we had done that last year.
I don't have an issue with that. Does that make sense?
No.
Any invoice that has a due date that will charge a late charge? I mean, some of them have to, but they don't charge a late charge. I'd like to round you on that first. Can I have something going on?
Let's just keep the specific credit cards. Utilities, cleaning, posted GPS, and freight charges, name and credit cards. Add that as a friendly amendment, if that's all right? Anything else? All right, then. All those in favor of adopting the remainder of the organizational meeting agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Abstentions. At this point, prior to item number 10, we are going to make a couple of changes to the agenda. After item number 11, we're going to have. Do you have stuff, Lars?
I do. But I can wait.
After item number 11, we're going to have Matt McKenna at MRB give us an update. And under new business, we are going to be introducing a sewer rate change law. Item number 10 is the public hearing on our 2018-2019 budget. Before we open the public hearing, I do want to point out a few things if everyone has copies of the draft budget in front of them. Historically, we have not kind of, well, we haven't, in my time on the board anyway, gone through the budget on a line-by-line basis. And we're not going to do that tonight, but I am going to point out several changes in the interest of information. Starting on page two, towards the top, you'll see a law contractual line. I've had some questions about legal expense. The village breaks out its legal expense by departmental usage when possible. So you'll see other additional legal lines throughout the budget. This particular legal line is general legal counsel to the village board as well as for general village matters. Towards the bottom of the page, under central barrage, the third item, you'll see DPW contractual. There is a significant decrease in that line, 50% decrease in that line due to the DPW being able to make certain purchases in this budget year that will not be returned. Everything else on this page is substantially the same, and I'll say a word about personnel at the end. On page three, about just a little over halfway down in police and public safety line, you'll see the fourth entry is contractual. That again is essentially a discretionary spending line of a police chief that's been decreased for this year, while everything else remains substantially the same. Skipping ahead to page five, you'll see one of the first other legal lines under safety inspection, the fifth line item, that is specifically for building code and fire code enforcement. That legal line has been decreased. Skipping ahead to the middle of page six, under street maintenance, you'll see a significant increase in the personnel or personnel services line. We are looking at adding a fifth DPW employee. At some point this year, we had actually intended to do it last budget year and ended up not needing to. But it looks like we will want to do that at some point. As many of you know, Bruce Mann was our DPW supervisor for a very long time, semi-retired, stayed on to help a lot, and he is finally moving in the direction of actually rehabbing. So where we've had, historically, we've had five and then four and a half, not that Bruce is ever a half, we will need to backfill that at some point. Partially offsetting that increase is the two lines further down, the street maintenance contractual line has been decreased by 30%. Skipping ahead to page nine, second half of the page. We are seeing increases in both the zoning and the planning lines, not only because of the time that is required of Matt with respect to the proposed project on South Street, but also because of, later on in the agenda, you'll see efforts that we will need to make to review our comp plan and zoning. Will demand more time of him. And in the zoning section, the contractual number, you see there $15,000, is an estimate of what we expect a third-party professional service to charge in the next year for the beginning part of that review process. Under planning, you see appropriated spending. That line is money that's allocated to the planning board for their own spending. We never historically had or needed that line. That is a line that the planning board will now have available to them if they need to spend money for services they may require in their review process. Skipping ahead now to page 11, second section there shows debt service, serial bonds, a payment this year of $50,000. That is the final payment on a bond for the Main Street sidewalk project. And a few lines down, you see sidewalk interest. There's actually going to be a bond replacing that, and it's actually fairly close in price, to pay for our portion of the remainder of the South Street sidewalk project. That will kick in next year. Skipping ahead now to page 12, a few lines down, you see real property taxes. Not the bottom line, but in a way that's the bottom. Real property taxes will be going up 3.5%, 3.5%. That's the levy that we hear about. That's where the tax cap override comes into play. Page 13, in the middle of the page, intergovernmental charges, just above the middle. You see two line items that say other governments. The first one, other governments, $299,111.23. That is revenue the village receives from the town of Ulysses, Covert, and Hector for fire protection. The next, other government line, $622,262.53, is money that the village receives from those same three towns, or portions thereof, for ambulance coverage. Last but not least, in general fund on page 15, second to last line on page 15, says appropriated fund balance. The village has historically, the department heads and trustees that work with them have historically done a very good job of keeping budgets in line to what's projected, coming in under budget whenever possible, and so we maintain an ongoing fund balance, which is not reserved for some other use. State comptroller recommends an unappropriated, unencumbered fund balance of about 10%. Once you start getting towards 20%, the comptroller starts to get a little annoyed. We're around 14%, and so we're able to allocate some of that unappropriate balance to this year's budget to offset some of the spending costs. One word on payroll. We did give village employees a 3% raise this year. There are two factors that I personally look at when looking at labor costs. One is the, what everyone knows as cost of living. There's also a lesser used, except in the private sector, methodology called cost of labor. Cost of labor tends to be more regional. It fluctuates a lot with the unemployment rate, so when unemployment rate is low, cost of labor is high, because it's harder to find the help that you want. Cost of living is basically derived from a federal government number that says that there's no inflation and nothing's getting more expensive. Cost of living this year was a 2.4% increase. Cost of labor was 3.4. So split the difference, and I'm comfortable, personally anyway, I'm comfortable giving our employees a 3% cost of living, cost of labor adjustment in their salaries. The remainder of the budget packet deals with water and sewer. The only items that I would point out, because everything is substantially the same, is on page three of the water fund. We see the long-term serial bonds starting to kick in for the completed water project. We had been paying about $90,000 a year in bond anticipation notes. The long-term bonds from New York State, zero interest financing, started to kick in, and so we see an increase in that debt service line under principle. The same is true in sewer. We go to the sewer packet on page three. You'll also see that long-term financing is kicking in, replacing short-term financing. Unless there's anything that anyone on the board would particularly point out, then I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing on the 2018-2019 budget. Just a word before we do that. A public hearing, unlike public comment or public meeting, a public hearing is really designed just to get feedback. If there are specific questions, then I will, and other board members can certainly as well endeavor to answer them. If it's more of the philosophical, for lack of a better phrase, why are we spending money on a police department kind of thing, then I will probably, probably not answer those directly. I'm more of a discussion for another time. The public hearing is designed specifically to get comment on this budget. So I would accept the motion to open the public hearing on the 2018-2019 budget.
I would open the budget.
Motion? Open the motion in a second. There's no discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are in public hearing on the 2018-2019 budget. Anyone from the public who'd like to comment, please do.
Sure. I want that to be included in the number. Oh, we're not the media, you know, or anything. And I can check all kinds of departments. I mean, anyone that's one. I was just about the tax levy.
Yeah.
I'm not sure, I'm trying to spark a conversation. Oh, first, is this the kind of a public hearing where you may ask questions?
I may.
Because it's the administration.
Sure.
Those are not the most, all of them. Anyway, I'm not sure where we are in terms of, is there a state mandated tax number? I know there's that special law that's been formulated that says you don't have to worry about it, but where are we in regards to how that stands? Is this current levy of three?
Three.
Against that?
This year's tax cap was actually the 2% that was advertised when they passed the law in 2011 or '12. The last several years, I don't have it right in front of me, we actually figured it out a while back. The last two or three years, we've been under 1%. Couple of years ago was 0.37%, was what Alvin said was the only increase we could have. This year is actually the 2%. We are not, so we are at 3.5%.
And that's unlimited, right? And with that law, the way I saw it written, would say it could be 90% if you guys don't choose.
In theory.
Don't choose that.
Elizabeth Meyer, I have a question regarding the budget for the police.
Yeah.
And one of the concerns that I've been focused on for some time is speeding in the village, and I'm wondering if the board has had a conversation about that and if the budget addresses issues of speeding in the village, because it seems that we don't have enough personnel to actually monitor that situation. And I'm wondering if somehow the budget will enhance, because there's an increase.
That question was in regards to the police budget, whether there's been some conversation about allocating additional funds to better enforce speeding. There has been a conversation, and we actually have just completed a study of traffic on South Street. I don't have it in front of me, because we were going to talk about it next meeting, but well over 4,500, almost 5,000 vehicles, so it's statistically significant. And from that study, then the board will discuss whether there needs to be additional enforcement. There are only certain, you know, certain number of hours in a day, so in terms of the times of day of speeding would occur, would be times when we have personnel already. So I'm not concerned that we need to increase any personnel line items for that issue. If there was an issue at a particular time of night when there isn't historically coverage, then that would be, that would be a concern.
I'm not sure that that traffic study addresses speeding. I think that has to do with numbers. I think that has to do with numbers of cars and so forth.
Yeah, I'm just going. Our police department just conducted its own, its own traffic study in the month of March, specifically in the morning and afternoon during school hours, because there's some concern over speeding during most times.
Is that on the website that we can access?
It hasn't been made available yet.
Could it be?
It will, it will, once this board has had a chance to look at it.
Okay.
It's considered police investigative at this point, but once it is not a police investigation, which is, is not subject to being made publicly available. Once it's no longer a police investigation, then this board will look at it and determine whether, whether something needs to be done. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I had a couple of questions, Sarah Adams. I'm not quite understanding the street maintenance numbers and why there was such a reduction in that. Some 42% and so I'm just curious about that. And...
Can you give me a page?
Oh, sorry. Yes. Page six, under traffications, oh, street maintenance.
The contractual.
Personnel services. Excuse me, but there was an increase there, but then...
The contractual.
Contractual, so those just get kind of...
How old are they?
At one point in the budgeting process, we were planning a mile of asphalt per year, which meant that we were circulating every 10 years, we would finish repaving, repaving the town, or the village, excuse me. What's also included for asphalt and street maintenance is the CHIPS line, which is, I believe, the next line in there. That's, that is money that we receive from the state that supplements the other line. At this point in time, based on what we were, we are planning for next year, the combination of what is provided by the state and that line is added together is what we intend to spend on paving next year. Okay, okay, thank you, Sarah. Okay. And just quickly, the other question I had was on page nine, under home and community And interestingly enough, there's a number for zoning and the same number for planning, which both sort of, and together represent like some 400% increase.
So when we originally filled the position of zoning officer and village planner, they were budgeted for five hours a week each. Between the time involved with the planning board and project review for the South Street submission, and the intention that we are going to review the complaint in zoning now with a concerted effort, that time is much more than five hours a week each. And so the increase represents the time to that position.
See, and the last budget, you had that at 15 hours, so they've gone to five hours from 15 hours?
We adjusted it to 15 mid-year.
Elizabeth, again, sorry, you went over so quickly, it's hard to keep up. But on page five, under safety inspection, the last item, legal.
Yeah.
There's an increase, a considerable increase there. Could we parse that a little bit? I'm not sure what that is in reference to.
It's actually a bit of a decrease, so if we look at the third column, now is last year's about the number of 15,000.
Okay.
We've reduced that to eight.
Yep.
Simply because the number that's being expended this year is very low. And that's specifically for legal issues that come out of fire code inspections of a restaurant, you know, that kind of thing. So fortunately, it's a lower number, so we're comfortable reducing any expenditure we might have for legal help in that specific category.
What's, what's a cause of that expectation? That decrease?
Based on what we've actually expended in the budget, we're finishing it.
Okay.
We're so far under budget this year that we think it's not reasonable to leave that 15,000 there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment or questions on the budget?
There's a quick, there's an increase in the summer youth programs, personal service, summer wrap.
So that's...
Any reason for that?
Primarily because minimum wages go down.
And I see you decided to keep Tom on?
I'm sorry.
Tom, so you're gonna, somebody assume that's a...
Any other public comment or questions on the 2018-2019 budget?
What's his field trips? For $5,000 that we're paying for under the summer wrap.
What page is that? Let's see.
Page eight.
So that's an annual field trip, there's a couple of them, the kids go on.
Yeah, we took one last year, and now we have $5,000 budget for this year.
So it's, that generally is a net zero. The kids pay for the program, so that just shows up in our budget.
Is this like the swim bus? I mean, what exactly, I mean, what is this exactly? What are these field trips?
So they go to sea breeze? That's the big one.
Oh, when the place over at those. Is that what you mean? The whatever summer trip?
Right, yeah.
Terry, there's also a revenue account with that exact same line, so it's like Ben said, it's a wash.
Well, I know some of it's due to pay to, when the Ulysses pays back when we do the $1,000.
So this is like, like the kids pay for the field trips when they go on them?
Correct.
So it just shows up in our budget. If you see the other line, we expect that revenue will be matched.
Can we just look at the planning board section, page nine? Could you talk a little bit about the contractual increase? Sorry, you probably did already, but I just, there's a lot of money.
No, that's fine. You're looking at planning or zoning?
Planning on page nine. And which of those consists of that, sorry, does he go zoning and planning, or how do you see this element?
Planning isn't so big as zoning.
What is the time increase?
The zoning, yeah. The zoning, personnel, personnel services is math.
The clock I had in the twenty.
The zoning contractual is an estimate of what we expect to pay a third-party professional consultant.
Okay.
Time to really look at comp plan. Comp plan first, zoning second. Under planning, Elizabeth, the appropriated spending line of 25,000, that is what the planning board has requested that they, that be made available to them for the purpose of the review of the project submission. That would be a line that the planning board could, if they chose to, charge to the developer.
I appreciate the response, just because if we're having increases in our taxes, it would be really nice to understand, David.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, Sarah.
Is the, and I apologize if I've been kind of not fully up to speed on this. Is the plan that the board votes to make on this, or? And I guess my question would be, when, how much in advance this final budget in, available? And it feels like there's really no, there's been no opportunity in the community as a whole. There's been, as far as I know, no real articles, anything about it. And I guess I would just like to have a chance for people, you know, a significant increase in people's taxes. And I'm not saying that there aren't reasons for it, but it just feels like there needs to be a little bit of time for the community as a whole to understand this. And I think it would be better in the long run for the board if you gave that to people rather than seeing a headline tomorrow, you know, tax increase or whatever. So just throwing that out as an idea.
Yeah, I would, my only, my only response would be is that we've had five budget meetings since the beginning of January where we actually parsed through all of those.
Right, but until it actually kind of all came together, it's pretty hard for the general public to follow that.
And I don't necessarily disagree. State law requires that the, this budget be submitted formally by the end of March and voted on by the end of April. So we have a small window to adopt it. If we were to make any substantial changes tonight, we would have to have another public hearing, which requires the five business day notice and so forth before the end of Any other public comment or questions on the budget?
So is the answer, it will be voted on, or will you wait till the end of the morning?
It will be voted on tonight.
Despite the fact that people haven't had a chance to review it?
That's interesting phrasing. Yes, it will be voted on tonight. I will say, I will just say, as a comment in 11 years, we have always encouraged people to come to the budget meetings. I understand it's a hardship to come to meetings at 7:00 PM on a weeknight. I'm hoping that recordings of the meetings and at some point live streaming the meetings will help that somewhat. But if we were to have an extended, in order to have a more extended period of time to review this, we would need to have Albany make some significant changes to go as well. Any other comment or question on the budget?
Janice, can you explain to everybody how the levy is set? I understand the budget, but I'm not sure if it stands out, whether it's determined.
Sure. Glad you asked.
Well, about a week ago, Vicki told me that it was 2.9, and now it's 3.5. So what, or, I mean, I know how it's set, but I don't know if a lot of people understand how it's set.
That's a great question. So the levy for any municipality, but only if it was specifically the village, is set by taking all of your expenses, subtracting all of your revenue, and we didn't go over the revenue lines. Revenues consist of our portion, the village portion of sales tax that we receive from the county. A handful of smaller items such as utilities, grocery receipts tax we receive from phone companies, cable companies, et cetera. Smaller fees that are charged for things like code enforcement, building inspection, building permit, you pay a small fee if you're doing an addition, that kind of thing. We receive the lines I did mention, substantial revenue from towns that we contract with for fire and EMS protection. As you take all of your expenses, subtract those revenue items, and you're left with a number. That number, the only way to make that up is either through unappropriated fund balance, if we have money left over from the previous year, or by levying taxes. When we levy the taxes, we take that number that needs to be raised and divide it into the total assessment, the total taxable assessment of the village, which for this year will be $131,486,500, I'm sorry, $131,486,503, which is up 3.5% from last year. I'm sorry, wrong. That's up about 0.9% from last year. That would give us a raw tax levy number. We have offset some of that number with $108,000 of appropriated fund balance from last year's, or from our unencumbered balance, and that gives us the levy that we're left I can't speak, I can't speak to the 2.9 versus the 3.5. Actually, you're right, thanks, Ben. The 2.9% increase then is the increase in the tax rate. So we have a levy, levy of $933,000 and change, that needs to be raised in taxes. We then divide that by the total assessment in the village, and that gives us a $7.10 per thousand, that's what you'll see in your tax bill, $7.10 village rate per thousand, which is, which is a 2.9% increase over last year's.
That's what Vicki told me, that then you said 2.5, that increase.
So 3.5 is the change to the levy. 2.9 is the change to the rate. I meant to do this before the case, so bear with me. That's a 20, 20 cent increase to the rate, which will be a $40 per year increase in your village taxes on a home, assessed at $200,000. Any other public comment or questions on the proposed 2018-2019 village budget? Questions or comments going once. If there are no additional comments or questions on the budget, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing on the 2018-2019 budget. Motion, here, second, hold on a second. Motion in a second. There's no discussion, all in favor, please say aye. Close. Staying, public hearing on the 2018-2019 budget, now closed. And so I would accept and entertain a motion to adopt the 2018-2019 village budget as Motion, is there a second? Motion in a second. Any discussion by the board on this budget? During the, all of the favor of adopting the 2018-2019 proposed budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I'm going to abstain, that was one abstention. 2018-2019 proposed budget has passed. Item number 11. Taking care of Teaver. Karen Powers. Please be honest.
Thank you, I really appreciate you putting us on this business.
Do you want to say?
No, I'm going to stay on that. I'm Karen Powers, and along with the Kaplan's, and Don Chawar, and the Almesco, and Silver Bush, and David Means, I'm here representing Karen Teaver. And if you don't know who we are, it's a group that kind of came into being after the Main Street project was completed, and we take care of the planters, and weeding, and litter pickup. Our money comes from the Kaplan's Family Beautification Fund, but we're hugely helped by the village office, Vicki and Pam, and by the DPW, the Duskin and Apple Company. Last year, the volunteers put in 173-plus hours, and despite of that many hours, we have a problem that we're looking for some help with. Probably the biggest litter problem in the village is cigarette lots. So we are proposing that the village purchase additional cigarette lot receptacles. We would like to see one by the trust company, by the bench. They do have one by the door, but the prevalence of cigarette lots are out where the benches are. In front of the new brewery, which was the Rondo, in front of Silver Line, and two, in front of Little Venice, to replace the two small ones that Steve and Robin had put in there. And then there would be consistency in style, and they would also be bigger throughout the village. We're proposing that the village would take responsibility for emptying them, because that's been the problem with the two in front of Little Venice, that they were never emptied. And that ideally, there would be some signage to go with the receptacles to really encourage people to use. people to use them for their cigarette butts. You know, we are certainly glad as a group to help with any research. Sybil has also already done significant research into good, substantial, strong receptacles. And, you know, we'd love to see this happen as we get into the season. Our first cleanup day is May 5th, Saturday, May 5th, you're all welcome to come. And, you know, it'll be a huge cleanup of cigarette butts. Probably over the course of the winter, that's the item that most people have commented me on, how many cigarette butts. So that's our proposal. Any questions or anything?
What time is the cleanup, Karen?
9 to 11, May 5th. Where I can give you a minute if you'd like.
Where do you meet?
We meet at the Mini Village, and Gimi Coffee always provides coffee.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Anything else?
Thank you for doing it.
Yes.
You're welcome, you're going to enjoy it. But I'll leave you with those proposals, and there's also some research Sybil did on Monday's work.
Tough act to follow there, man. If you're ready.
Sure, and I introduce myself, and then I'm just in the chat with Mr. B., involved with a couple of the ongoing projects. Have an update on both water and wastewater. Water, we've been wrapping up, comes outside with contractors, working towards getting these contracts closed out. One thing that has been updated to the board throughout the project is some changes that have occurred during construction, addition of items such as rock removal. So tonight, we put together a, we have a change order for the GC contract, which has been an over-under. Some portions of the project, like the wellhouses, for example, were bided to them some. Other portion of the project that was the water main portions were unit price. So with that, we have additions of certain components, like water main, for example, may have gone X feet over just based on construction. Other items that weren't incorporated into the project obviously get deducted out. So I pass the memo along to the board dated April 2nd, 2018, which has those over-under items to be credited back more. If you'd like, if we walk through each one, or kind of just give us a, just a, a structure analysis. So there was more over than under. Some of the major contributing factors, the big ticket items was rock removal. Geotech was done prior to the project, which gives us a estimate or an understanding of what the rock formations may be. However, predicting what is under the ground when we go through digging a trench is often difficult. That was one of the big items that we experienced. Another component that exceeded our estimated quantities was directional drilling, where the water main was actually drilled. One of the main reasons for the overages was the construction of the kind of false state park overlooked parking lot. When we went into design and bid, that parking lot wasn't there. When we went into construction, that parking lot was there. To prevent any disturbance to that parking lot, we actually had to extend the directional drill. So that was both for water main as well as electrical conduits that had the directional And then driveway and pavement stone restoration, that was also another big ticket item. Improvements were made down at the driveway to the booster pump station, as well as changing the alignment during construction resulted in more driveway crossings, which also ultimately led to more quantities. With that, each contract had allowance built into their contract. The general contract didn't use all the funds that were remaining, plus or minus $13,000. So that $13,000 is ultimately credited, would be credited back to the village. That is part of the change order, which would increase the general contract by $45,600. And that is the net of the over-under and allowance credit back. So that's kind of the summation of the change order presented tonight to the GC. Total amount of change order, it's an increase of $45,600?
I want to count now. $45,600, yep.
How much is left in the contingency right?
Total right now, project contingency were about $150,000. So that number has kind of moved, but that's where the project stands, which would be remaining funds still at the end of the project.
And that's accounting for this change order?
I need that we approve the change order for $45,600.
Motion in a second. Any discussion on the project change order? So how is this relating to the document?
I have that one.
That's next. This looks kind of very different than what it was. Very good.
Dan, will you be second on that?
The next one is...
So we have a motion and a second to adopt this change order. Additional discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose. Abstention of the change order is adopted. Go ahead, Ben.
The next one is change order on the plumbing contract. This kind of got a mix-up on my end, and I apologize for that. But the work is for improving the connection to the water service down in the treatment building, and working with the GPW staff with this. We didn't realize that the allowance money that was still remaining in the contract was credited back, we closed out, ultimately why we're here for a change order. But what the whole, the toll change order is resulting from providing a more redundant, secure wire transition from the existing pipe, maybe to a hard brass fitting, that will make sure that, you know, they've had some slippage down with the fittings, and just kind of recommend that we go in this direction where we have flange connection and anchored into the floor, so that these guys don't have to lose sleep that night. So that change order is for $2,139.07 coordinated with this contractor to try and get this wrapped up in the next two weeks, if this has been going, an ongoing issue. He understands the urgency, and once this work is completed, if approved, that contractor would be ready to be closed out.
You took the credit back? I guess I missed how that happened, exactly.
It got credited, yeah, the allowance at some point, I think it was the fall, it was not the full $5,000, but it was maybe $4,100 that was remaining in allowance, but at one of these four days, it was credited back to the village, even though the contract
Any questions for men on this change order? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept this change order.
I'm going to accept this change order.
Motion is a second. Any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor of accepting this change order, please say aye. Aye. Oppose. Abstention. What's next, man?
Engineering amendment number five for the well and water system improvement project. Passed along an amendment, totals $5,670. And what this amendment is for is to bid out the procurement of a emergency backup generator that the GPW staff would have access for, and using down at the New York State Parks wellhouses. One of the things that we designed components in for temporary connection, and now with remaining funds left in the project, we're presenting to go ahead and put equipment procurement bid out for portable emergency backup generator and trailer.
Can we improve this?
This was...
We talked about it.
We talked about it. This is the $5,670 one?
Correct.
I need that we go forward with the $5,670 change order, amendment number five.
Second. A motion and a second on the change order for the generator procurement process, any What's that?
I don't present gasoline or propane, I mean, what is the house that you're in?
We the electrical engineer has specified diesel. It's diesel.
There's no further discussion then, all in favor of adopting this change order on the procurement of the generator, please say aye. Aye. Oppose. Abstention.
And then just a quick note on that, I have sent an email along about boundary assurances, so we're looking to have that advertised to be April 4th, April 13th, and award at the following, next, May 14th or maybe so. Just need to get a response on that and how we want to move forward, so.
From the boundary assurance?
Correct.
Can we use that tonight?
By tomorrow. Tomorrow sometime.
Just open that.
Okay, I'll take that off then.
And then, next item, we have amendment to Moody's, the well drillers' original proposal and agreement. This was for additional sampling down at the wellhouses. The operators have been working with us, trying to see, there's a little increase in turbidity. The agreement here for $1,200 was to go out and do some additional sampling, do some test, step tests, and actually just have some preliminary results set over on our way down here to meet with Moody's. So we've been working with the village staff, also Moody's associates, and trying to get a plan of attack moving forward there, so.
And we use that. But this has already been done, right?
The work has been done.
The work has been done.
And the plan is, I've been coordinating with the OH, to get this amended into the funding of the water project. Presenting on behalf of Moody's.
And the reason it was done at that point in time is because Moody's was already on site?
Yes, Moody's was on there, yeah.
So I need that we approve this amendment? Okay. Tell me how much it was.
$1,200.
A motion on the table, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this $1,200 amendment? If not, then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
That's what I got on the water project, and then just a quick update on the wastewater project. GC contractors completed the work, and going forth with us on completing the punchless items that have been outstanding since then. Start of the training was performed a week or two ago, and there is still remaining training that is available to the village staff and operators as lead, as lead family project. Hope and goal would be to have this project closed out at the next four meetings, as long as everything is completed. Just to mind, our electrical work is being done at the facility right now, and the site being bought and done, that's what it is.
Okay, Bell Press is up and operating, is that calling for it, Jenny, or?
Correct. And we have coordinated, sent along the list for some sledgehammer fees, but we need to know ultimately what's going to be brought into this project, timeframe wise. So I'm, Vicki, you had to work with me on that.
I'm sorry, I...
Sledgehammer, sledgehammer.
Oh, I did all that for Mary, all those, Captain, those invoices?
Yeah.
From Ithaca and from Dixon, Mary, Captain.
Okay, we're going to just have to go through it from the top.
Right, okay. I'm sure the labors will be appreciated.
Yes, so moving forward, the village has the capability of pressing sounds like it has done prior to this work.
Any update on the stormwater side?
Stormwater, so as the weather starts to improve, time will be to get back out on site. I personally have walked just about the entire northern portion of the village. Next step would be to come and walk the southern portion. The plan of attack here is to go out and get boots on the ground, see what's installed on the ground, catch basic, what infrastructure is there, and then try to get a general understanding of where the drainage areas are, as well as mapping, so that the village has a useful document to move forward with maintenance, as well as anything into the near future. So as the weather improves, begin back out to wrap up that portion of work.
And where are we?
The final report was presented to the village, sat down with GPW as well as that, they were making, sort of, we're making improvements that are still down in that report.
I see on the campaign report that they have, it looks like we're more flowing through the work order, and is that like the IIs contributing to that?
Correct, all right. The study said that we go out and investigate and locate where inflow and infiltration is getting into the collection system, all came up to the treatment.
And out of the items, I think there was three or four items on that list, at least three of them are already, are in process of being addressed.
Good.
They have parts ordered for it to be taken care of.
Item number 12 on our agenda is apartment has all of the, did it, see Dusty, anyone?
I just came to sit in, I was talking to Ben.
Anything from, give me the treasure roll, or whatever.
No, I'm going to have special text, now that the village doesn't have them. I'm on vacation. Anybody that's on vacation? All right, that's worth a call.
For the mayor's report, I guess is what we're calling it, just two items. One is, we closed out the 2017-2018 deer management program at the end of March. I believe 52 deer were taken, which is up from both last year and the year prior, still lower than our inaugural year of 92, 92 deer. But it continues to be a successful endeavor, and I want to thank the folks who managed that program for their hardworking dedication. And then the other item I wanted to mention is, I will be holding formal office hours Wednesday from 9:00 AM to noon. This will be by appointment, so please don't line up down the sidewalk at 7:00 in the morning on Wednesday. Camp out, camp out for concert tickets, Tammy will know what to do.
Just one time, please.
But part of what I want to do is, in addition to meetings with... But part of what I want to do is, in addition to meetings with other municipal representatives, department heads, and legal issues that we face, from time to time, I do want to make myself available to members of the public. If there's an issue that you'd like to read about, and it's more convenient to come in in the morning than schedule a time on an evening or a weekend, some of which I'm available, some of which I'm not, depending on how my calendar gets filled up, then that is something that's available. If you do find yourself desirous of scheduling some time to talk to me on a random Wednesday morning, please call Tammy to schedule. She has access to my calendar, and she can fit you in. I will say that the Wednesday prior to a board meeting will never be a good Wednesday because of prepping for this meeting, meeting with an attorney and whatnot.
You mean Wednesday of a board meeting?
What's that?
Wednesday of a board meeting, not previous Wednesday?
No, the Wednesday prior to a board meeting. So, last Wednesday would not have been a good Wednesday. Two days from now is wide open. All right, moving along. Item number 13 is our first public comment period, privilege of the floor. As we discussed earlier, we will be limiting this to 15 minutes max. But you will not individually be limited, although I do ask that you... Exercise discretion as to how long we take. Please do stand, state your name, but you don't have to state your address, if anyone would like to say anything.
Mr. somebody by hand? Janice, for sir. This question is for Deb, but I do see the report here that the amount of gallons going through the treatment plant is, you know, over the limit. Is this the second time it's happened since?
It is.
This is the second time?
It is.
And it says that there is a, you know, report given to the DDC. What is the consequence of these reports?
I asked the same thing. And the answer that I got, oh, it's an answer. But basically, the answer is, is it's actually very common, particularly with high water events and during snow belt season. And that unless, I think it is consistent in a pattern beyond consistency, there's nothing, there is no...
There is, my gosh. Thank you.
Now, that being, if it ends up being consistent, and we don't address the INI, and I don't know, I actually don't know what steps the DDC would require us to take at that point.
Well, is this what initially led to the redoing of the water sewer treatment plant?
No, it's not. What led to the redoing of that was the fecal count and the lockout.
But not to access, not according to DDC.
That's correct. Thank you.
Ma'am, what's the actual, just as a frame of reference, what's the actual physical handling capability of the plant in terms of daily flow?
So, the plant is permitted for 2,000 gallons per day, but peak events or start events, the plant is sized for 1 million.
Do you repeat that, Matt?
Don't use that for them.
Sorry. The plant's permitting capacity is 250,000 gallons per day. That's the average daily flow that the plant is permitted for. At a peak storm event, our design of the plant incorporated sizing of treatment processes for 1 million gallons per day. So, roughly, a peaking factor of four is a safe way to say from permanent to peak flow.
So, to kind of flesh out Janice's question a little bit, prior to the redevelopment of the sewer plant, we still saw these peak events, which exceeded our permit of 250,000 gallons a day. But when that happened, not all of the extra flow was being treated or treated properly. Now, it's all being treated properly. We just have to manage a way back down under what New York State DDC says we're supposed to be treating. The reality is, we can treat more, but the permit is only for a certain number.
Is there a, is there a way to get the DDC to raise our permit level, given that we are, can handle aliens?
Correct. You can. And we'd have to give them hard counts on why we are needing to, well, hard counts on the process, being able to treat the increased capacity on an average day basis.
Can we, have we started that process to give the DDC that? I know we, this is only the second time, but...
The DDC's stance is to investigate INI, get rid of INI, and then if all steps are taken to decrease INI, that plant capacity is still needed, that's when you go back route of...
Increasing the permit?
Increasing the permit.
You're not making any changes, other than getting them to agree that it's okay?
It's a higher flow, it's a number. And I will say, from that stance, we've seen some significant high flow events, and except from a loading standpoint versus a concentration, the plant is always treated above and beyond the permit.
What's INI, please?
Inflow and infiltration, where stormwater is making its way into the sewer system. So, not like flushing your toilet, but when rain, fall happens, it makes its way into a manhole cover, or some points that are connected directly to the sewer system. That is unanticipated flow that falls under the category of INI. It ultimately goes to the treatment plant.
Any other public comment or questions?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mark Gatlin, M. Wood Street, if anyone has interest. I have a question, and it's a little different than anything that's been discussed before here, and it may not even be relevant to us, and I want to know if it is or it isn't. There's been a lot of publicity about the incinerator in Romulus, which I fear is going to have negative impact on our air quality, possibly our land, what goes into a landfill in the way of ash, what that might be. And specifically, truck traffic on 96, where they're talking, if I believe what I've read, 250 trucks going one way, and they all have to come back the other way each day. Is there a role that this municipality should play or can play in the discussion at the state level, or with other municipalities regarding that issue?
Great question. And should and can are two different questions. Should is an opinion of this board and the community. Can is yes, to a certain extent. So, we've dealt with the truck traffic issue in the past, and New York State DOT is very clear that there isn't a way to keep trucks off of state roads. They have issued a, for lack of a better phrase, a very weak opinion, asking private truck haulers to please use interstates. But there's no teeth to it, because unless Albany amends vehicle and traffic law, you can't ticket those trucks. You can only, you can only call or write to DOT and say, hey, you know, you're a member of it, and you're not... The sternly word of memo didn't get traction, did you, though? In terms of the incinerator project itself, I would imagine there are going to be, there may be some legal action somewhere along the line, in which case the board could certainly offer opinion, amicus brief type of thing. None of that has come to the villagers' attention yet, but I would expect, I would expect to see and hear more. It's really, it's a function of how proactively does this board want to seek avenues to have that kind of influence? As with any large project, they will have their own review process in the town of Romulus to go through, how much weight they would give to an opinion of the municipality outside of their town.
My understanding, there have been other municipalities that have stood up and made a statement that would support. But there's also a citing commission, as I understand it, I'm not sure I have full knowledge of that, but that the citing commission can overturn or overrule local municipalities. This would be a state citing committee going through an expedited process. And anything that's in Albany may be a little suspect in terms of how that's decided. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious, as someone that is very concerned. I grew up downstream, or down air, I'll put it that way, of a pulp and paper plant in Portland, Oregon, about 30 miles away. And if the wind was blowing in the wrong direction, it was not pleasant. And, you know, I fear that we might have the same process here, depending on what is going into the air and the ash that's going into the ground. And I just think it's something that we need, as a village, need to be aware of.
Any other public comment or questions? Yes, sir. Lots of time, lots of questions.
Good luck to all you guys, the new guys. I really do need a workout this year. We could be interested in you. As the remaining members, or current members, whether in the new capacity or otherwise, that I know, a number of village residents, as well as county school people, have regularly attended village board meetings in the past years. They have asked questions and raised issues regarding a number of topics, including zoning, development, water and sewer, rising taxes, et cetera, and many other issues, only to have them dismissed and/or ignored by the previous board and mayor, something close to the year. And they form newly elected trustees, the incumbent for one secretary, the mayor, the new mayor, congratulations, all advocated for open and transparent government. So, should we expect, as we've generally did, that the village board is currently convinced to now address those issues and answer those questions that have been unanswered and under addressed, as well as entertain any new questions? If so, how and when would that happen? If not, why not?
So, some of the things we're going to start, I mentioned...
Oh, may I say, I am impressed by the more openness of the meetings of the board, so thank you for that. I'd like to feel less intimidating and more friendly.
Some of it starts with, like I mentioned, the office hours, I do want to make myself available to meet with folks. I'm investigating, me personally, I'm investigating a way to do, and I'm told it's easy, but it's not in my wheelhouse, a page on our village website that I may just call something silly, and somebody's asked them there, a kind of a question submission place for non-emergency questions. God sakes, this group is emergency, you know, that I'm not going to... But a way, a way to get those questions in a public format, so it's not just an email that I reply, and nobody knows if it's a relevant question. The logistics of it, again, I don't understand how that, someone over here probably understands it a lot better than I do. I want a way to, a few years ago, we got something like 1,300 emails in 24 hours from folks who were unhappy about the deer program. That was something that was just one of these blast email, denial of service type things from somewhere out of state. I want to avoid any type of that situation happening on the website. So, there'll have to be some kind of a filtering process, where it's, you know, who is this person asking, or even if that's not shown on the website, we want to somehow verify who's asking the question, and then I can answer. I mentioned the office hours. The, starting this week, again, by Wednesday morning is my goal, every piece of paper that we have that's not privileged information, or personnel, or police investigation, or privileged legal document, such as stuff we get from MRB, or budget, or whatnot, will be scanned into one packet and placed on the website. I think the county does it that way. I know we do it that way at the health consortium. So, if you're interested in, you know, what was that document that was handed to the board, you'll be able to Tuesday or Wednesday morning go online and pull the full packet. Where did I forget it? I'm entertaining the idea, and I'm open to feedback. I'm entertaining the idea of stealing a page from Kimberly Bell's recent Coffee with the Superintendent, which has been well received, and I think she's really enjoyed it. I'm thinking of trying to set up some type of small group, you know, less than a dozen, Coffee with the Mayor, two, three times a year, something like that. So, I'd be open to opinions. Doesn't have to be now, but if anyone thinks it's a good idea, bad idea, or indifferent concern, nail me. Just as a way to improve, and even beyond improve, increase back and forth between this board and members of the community outside of this night. So, that's the medium length answer that I have. I don't know if anyone else has any.
May I suggest that you work on the inventory of stuff that's already out there? And give a reason why you can't answer, not you personally, your village.
Yeah. I forgot, we were still recording meetings. We are working on a live streaming.
Well, sounds great. You know, here's where I can answer questions and issues, and you know your reasons for them, they're answers. If anybody else is, if anybody's interested in finding them, the ones who can't be answered, they're dead, in case of any. There are reasons they can't be given, tell us to me. To me, they're under arrest pretty much every board meeting over the last year, as you know. I haven't missed them. But anyway, those are great ideas, and much greater than what we see in terms of outreach going forward. I'd be interested in going back and seeing if they're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other public comment or question?
Can I do a quick add on, just a quick add on, is there a surge within tree housing? I think the idea of the village board going on record in opposition to the incinerator is really an excellent idea. Thanks for presenting it. And I would ask the village board to really consider that very soon, mostly because it's a huge health issue. I don't think it's going to float, there's going to be a lot of lawsuits involved with it. But I think where we are down this side, though, that would be a really great opportunity.
Anyone else? Just three minutes left.
Might it sound heavy? I like long walks on the beach and... I'm so sorry, I won't do this anymore. No, please, too.
Wouldn't have it any other way. All right. If there are no other comments, public comments, we will have another time available at the very end of the meeting. I only see one, if I'm not missing anyone, representative from another municipal board. Sorry, if you have any.
Am I the one you see? Well, I'm just standing in for, when you look at me, think Nancy Zalich, because I'm just sitting in for Nancy on this thing. Just a few things, and she says, make it especially clear that you're congratulating Mayor Hart, and the trustees, Ben Hart, the two bands. Thank you, guys, for serving, and we just wanted to say great that you're here. The town will be convening, and just a few bullet points you left me. A town will be convening an advisory committee to invite input and provide oversight for the town of Sano Habitat, which is right over that way. It's, for those, it's a very wooded area, a little sloppy here and there, but it's a wooded area that goes between Sano Drive and the northern part, northernmost part of the town. And it's a beautiful place, and we would like to have the village rep there along with, on this committee, along with the neighbors and other stakeholders, such as farmers' market, or the police, for that matter. Falls Road, Matt Plannin report appears to be ready. Is Matt still here?
I am.
Appears to be ready, that's shared with the residents, and they can make decisions about next step in forming a water district along Falls Road. Our attorney has more time to tackle a number of legal issues for the town, so there will be a lot more hock of it. We'll be addressing the water district issues related to South Street and cars. The town will be following up with SureSafe, trying to get them to add the extension of the new walkway that's along 96, so the people can... the new walkway that's along Ninety-Six, so the people can actually get from Ninety-Six down the hill to, to shop, you know, to buy groceries and whatnot. Because it's very hard to walk, suddenly walk into the mud or go on the road. Apparently, the county sheriff, who's providing contracted security to the grassroots festivals, is going to new parking and new camping right behind Sure Safe along Falls Road. That should be interesting for me to get out of there all the time, since I live just past there. That's gonna be an interesting part of the summer. The, just a personal note, the youth commission, T-Bird Community Recreation, team to work together to find ways more creatively use our existing resources to expand our recreational opportunities. And I think personally, I think the gentleman who brought up, and Mr. Bergeron.
Thank you.
Sorry, I, all I can think of is, yeah, sorry, is, it not, should not only be a village advocacy brief or a, or a town advocacy, we should be gathering a coalition of all these cities and towns and villages along this entire area to, to question it. Because I worked for the EPA way back in the Nixon administration, and burning garbage for energy was a big push back in those days. So, I'd like to know what's happened in those forty years, in terms of cleaning, being able to scrub it. I don't know, but viscerally, I'm opposed to it, and I think we should all look into joining forces and saying, this is not right for this area. Stop sending atomic energy, stop sending atomic waste to the San Diego plant, which all happened during World War Two and beyond, and stop putting garbage incinerators in our, in our van. Now, that's just my opinion, I don't speak for the town on that, I'm sorry. We're, oh, the work of the TTM's, tri-hedral methane, that we had a bit of a problem with is, is actually paying off. All our scores are lower now, which is a good thing, not like high school. Our scores are dropping so that we're below the parts per billion rate that we, we were above because, for, well, for various reasons, it's, it's a complicated issue. But we're doing much better because there's an aerator put into the Wolf Tank, Wolf Road Tank, Wolf Lang Tank. Clearing title, oh, the natural area, we, the town had purchased a natural area between the, I don't know where I am again, but between the, Black Books Pike, I said, Black Diamond Trail and Route Eighty-Nine, that we're hoping to be able to donate to the state parks. They're, they're interested in, and we're just in the process of clearing title for that, it'd be a good addition to the area. And that's it.
Thanks, John. Any questions for the board? No, Nancy Zalich. Couldn't make that leap?
The next time, John, maybe do it, do it in character. That's all I would ask.
There's so many things I can't say.
Item number fifteen on the agenda, the trustees' reports on imagining a new fire commissioner doesn't have a board at this time. Anything from EMS?
We're looking, we're looking at the rest of you, we're looking at a new ambulance tomorrow, which is actually a demo, so hopefully, we're a bit of a spec, we can say, we're, we're on the other end. And for the youth commission, we have a new member from the town, Bill Doolan. That's all.
If the files when I drop up, I mean, everybody's.
There is, I mean, our rates are bad, and there's a report. Maybe Brian can see the whole board? Two did. There is not, there's no physical, no paper associated with this part of the town. For the spec, there's definitely. EMS review? Deb, GBW water storage?
Increase, but I don't have, I don't have any other changes other than, I'm ready to write. Okay, I'm proposing that we raise our sewer rates by one dollar for inside rates and one dollar and a half for outside rates. And I don't have the total amounts here. Let's give it a second. I think it's.
Will this be a state professor or a law?
No, this isn't. Oh, okay, but there are some, okay.
Well, we can come back to that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay. Go on.
Although I am no longer the police commissioner, I do have one item, which is a new hire, which I will actually save personnel apart for example, session one, we'll have one new police officer to, to hire at the end of the meeting. Item number sixteen, acknowledgement of correspondence. Guessing we didn't get any correspondence directed at this board as a whole in the month of March. Item number seventeen, old business. Why, do you wanna look at those EMS rates at some point? Do you want to press it back?
I don't think we're out of all of this.
Do you wanna table that?
I would like, I didn't say it on, so it's up to you.
Why?
If we can address it in a minute, if I'm not, yeah, we could just, we might go for it. I mean, it's some of the information, the stuff that I need to get, if you need to get, but I can probably talk to them. We can do that for me.
Especially if it's gonna lead to a change. In the drop box in today's meeting, at the top, second from the bottom is this EROC committee. I had some questions about this. This was something that was brought to us a couple of months ago by the fire chief, and I had some questions about what it entails. It's essentially a review and oversight committee that's being put together at the county level just to review the efficiency and operation of Towns and County Emergency Management. There is no, there's no budgetary impact, there's no, we're not agreeing to any policy changes, they're simply asking for certain people to participate in that committee, and the fire chief is one of them. So, unless there's any reason anyone can think of why they wouldn't want to participate in this review committee, then I would, I would actually believe that we accept the proposal of the Towns and County Emergency Responsible Oversight Committee, join that committee, and appoint the fire chief or his delegate to attend. And I remove that.
I'm sorry, you're gonna reboot like?
I moved it. I moved that. That's seconded. Any discussion on this?
Thank you for looking into it.
Again. All right, hearing the discussion, then, all in favor of approving this intermunicipal committee agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extinction, all right, that passes. Last item under old business is. Last item under, under old business actually ties into the first item under new business. I would like to recommend that this board reboot, for lack of a better word, reboot and reform what was previously known as the zoning revision committee into a comprehensive plan, review, and zoning revision committee. My suggestion would be that that board reformed, that this board consider names for the committee, which we would adopt and form at the May meeting. My suggestion would be that we have one member only from this board, one member from the ZBA and one member from the planning board, that we would include the zoning officer, the code enforcement officer, and then, subject to this board's desire, as many as five or six members of the public, some of, some of whom I have, I have names that I would like to include, and you can, I haven't spoken to all of them yet, so I wanna make sure that they're on board before I throw them in the deep end. And then, in conjunction with that, the first item of new business would be, I, I would like to task our zoning officer with developing, help from our attorney, developing a full RFP, request for proposal from a professional consulting firm, to assist with the comprehensive plan review piece, and if it's the same firm that would then lead to helping to rewrite the zoning, I'm, I'm not married to that idea. Could be different firms for the two different pieces of process. There are some reasons to think it would make sense that it be the same firm, but the, the idea that I have in mind is that the professional outfit, the professional consultant, work with the committee. The committee's goal would be to really organize the community piece, especially if we're talking about comprehensive plan review, and, and the timing is good because we adopted the comp plan in two thousand eight, so we're ten years in now. That process took thirty months, and there were half a dozen or eight public, well-organized public meetings. I remember one of the public meetings at the firehouse had, had kind of stations set up where you could go around and discuss a piece of this, a piece of that, a piece of the other. So, that piece of the organization, community-style organization, however you get that input, I don't wanna pay a professional, professional dollars to do that piece. And so, the committee becomes very important to that. The data that's gathered by the committee, then, we would have professionals to, to parse, and I would also like to have the professional organization do the language, do the drafting, if there's any revision. And then, from that, and the second step would be to take whatever the new comprehensive plan is, marry that up or lay it over the two thousand twelve zoning, and have the professional organization draft whatever changes need to be made in the zoning to bring it into line for the comp plan. I have a ambitious, we'll use that word, an ambitious timeline of thirty months from start to finish for comp plan and zoning, bearing in mind that it took thirty months for each piece last time. I don't believe that that can be accomplished without professional help, and I'm hoping that the individuals we select for this committee will be willing to push, gonna have to push, to do all of that within that time. If it takes longer, it takes longer, but it's an ambitious timeline, will at least set the, set the stage for what we can hope will be a very different process than we had before. So, that's, that's the idea I'm floating, and hoping. Any comments, concerns, questions, contributions?
I mean, I think the RFP is the right route. I'm a little bit concerned the reaction you'll get when you ask someone to analyze data that they don't collect themselves, and that'll be a lot of, but I think, I think they'll have to work pretty closely throughout the process, maybe, maybe drive and overdate, but, you know, survey questions and that kind of thing are hard, that's, that's the bottom line.
Well, I think, I think in the RFP, we would explain what we're looking for, so the committee will be able to utilize the professional for, for instance, for the survey. That way, we don't get into trouble making it look like the village is conducting a survey, which we're not allowed to do at that house.
My concern about any RFP is actually knowing enough to know when to ask in the RFP. So, are you asking, you're gonna go out to do the RFP, and you're asking this committee to put the RFP questions together?
I'm asking for, I would be asking for Matt along with Guy Pro to have an RFP for this board to review, ready by May, by our May meeting.
Wow.
When that RFP, if this board would then review the language of the RFP, and if it's acceptable, if we need to change it, we can change it. If it's acceptable, then we would put that out with probably a sixty-day time for response. By May, I would like us to have most, at least have names to bring to the May meeting, the people that we've spoken to or that would be willing to serve on the committee. And so, those two tracks kind of meet, we'll have a committee formed, and then we'll have an RFP ready to go out. The committee can start the meeting process at their discretion to start to plan community meetings and whatnot. Once we get the RFP back from, hopefully, a handful of qualified firms, then I would want the zoning revision committee to review the RFPs that we get back, make a recommendation. And of course, this board would have to make the ultimate decision. And I'd rather, again, I'd rather have a very aggressive timeline and have to push them back than slow on it.
I understand that, but I think the more important thing is the RFP and being able to ask, make sure that you're getting what it is you need. And it, it concerns me that I can read the RFP for a comprehensive plan and tell you, oh, that sounds good, but I don't know enough about comprehensive planning to know what I would be asking of a comprehensive planner or a zoning person. I mean, I would go to somebody who actually knows that and see, get four or five other examples and try and put, put it together, but it seems to me that a month and only two people is, one being the lawyer, is not a lot of depth to what you're gonna be really asking for.
I, I thought of that, and actually, I asked Guy about it, and he has specifically helped with, with the drafting.
That's a big thing.
I didn't wanna leave it to just him, and I didn't wanna leave it to just Matt.
Right.
I think between the two of them, Guy particularly, not, not anything at all against Matt, Guy particularly is very good about saying, I don't know this. So, if he didn't know something, then he would certainly say so. This he doesn't know.
Okay.
But I'll make it clear, if, if the board agrees to this, I'll make it clear to both of them that if they feel like there's, they're all out of their depth, that we would see outside help in the RFP drafting.
Certainly, I thought an educational component to this, too, and I know, for instance, when I started the zoning revision committee, I hadn't, didn't have a lot of background, right? And I imagine if we're governing people for the public, well, while we vary degrees of education background, understanding what's going on. Certainly, some of this is our own impression of what we want our village to be, and that isn't something that comes from education, but I think there's also context and information and experience that can be brought in some of this, so they keep in mind that the RFP can, a give and take with the professional firm to help, probably not even just people on, on the committee, but maybe a broader, part of that broader community engagement is not just getting feedback from the community, but also helping understand what's a comp plan, what we do it at, why do we want it, zoning, how does that work in the middle of the picture, that kind of thing.
So if it's all right, then I will help with that and Guy on the RFP side. And then I would like this board to come to the May meeting, if possible, with some names. Again, let's not volunteer anyone without speaking their names.
However, we have volunteers, we should have them speak up.
Yeah, I think we should have them, I think we should...
That they would be interested.
I have had a couple of people volunteer for certain things already. I want to make sure that this is something that falls into the category of what they would be interested in doing. But absolutely, if anyone in the audience or on videotape thinks this is something they'd be interested in, then certainly throw your name in the hat, please, via email, and so this board can consider it. It's the nature of committees, the larger they get, sometimes the less effective they are. So we won't be able to do a committee of 15 or 20. But I think nine, 10, or 11 is workable. Can we open up to a debate?
And I think that's still the more aggressive timeline, and you have the more political there. Because when we keep saying, well, we'll do a public meeting, we'll ask... That's how it gets to be 30 months, and then another year, and another year, 30 years, you know?
I'm going to actually table the second piece of new business, if that's all right. I want to have a conversation with the fire chief on a couple of things before we further address the firehouse renovation. Hope for proposed firehouse renovation someday. The third item under new business is, I mentioned earlier, we used to have a chamber liaison, which we got away from, and now we have one again. One of the questions that's come up to this board from time to time is economic development. Does it build a board for, in terms of economic development? Which is always a good question. But the chamber worked us a lot of work. It works very hard to have an economic development committee. So I'm hoping to not duplicate what they do. And so I'm going to, if it's all right with the board, I will reach out to the chamber and ask if our liaison can now sit on their economic development committee, just to lend the village perspective, but also get information from the chamber to the perspective of all the things they work on. The second item where I think the chamber and the village can work together is, I had the idea that it might be nice if some type of physical, and I know we do so much online these days, but if there was some type of physical welcome packet that new residents to the village would receive. As it so happens, the chamber has been talking about this for about three years, and they haven't really put something together. Their perspective is purely, let's have flyers and rack cards of all the businesses in the village. The village is in a position to be able to say, well, there was a closing on a house because of your resident, let's put together a package. So I would like to at least consider having the village work with the chamber on something.
Welcome back.
Yeah, but we're not mailing them to all of your residents early. And it doesn't include change.
Yes, part, yes.
It doesn't include change information.
No, I don't include anybody but us.
I think it should be broader. I think it should be, welcome to the village, here's your government, here's all the places. We, here's all, do more promotion of the village, not just try to get people to the meetings and evolve.
And I just said, a part of it, I can't remember which organization it ran at. Does this Maury, do you remember? I thought it was the open building. Open, with the, with the, BFW with Better Company or something. But that's not it. I know that it exists other places. I know my mother still lives in her city, so... That's what she was in, so...
Yeah, so it's just an idea, you know, maybe the logistics of it, maybe the logistics of it won't work out, but I think coordinating between the village and the chamber could really give a nice rental property we won't necessarily know all the time, unless there's a large village chamber that would have the packets available in the office. Just a little bit more community engagement outside of contentious political times. And then the last item that I think we should look to work with the chamber closely on is, actually, Tammy, what was that? What municipality was that?
Candor.
So Candor has started something they call a safe spot program. And it's basically some version of the municipality working with individual businesses to designate areas where particularly children, but really anyone, if there's an emergency, kid gets lost, where they know they can go, and those, the business has agreed that they will know where to come back. I think between the youth program and Trumansburg Community Rec and Chamber, I think we've got a lot of players involved that if we can kind of bring them together and not volunteer any businesses for that kind of responsibility, but I think we will find businesses who would jump at the opportunity and then make village resources available. If this happens, then, you know, contact so-and-so during these times of day, and someone else during other times of day, and so forth. So there is a, there's a luncheon on April the 18th at the library at noon, where the chamber is going to be looking for all kinds of ideas. So I'm planning to attend and throw some of these at them, throw them on the wall and see if any of them stick. Unless this board thinks that anything's sort of bad. The only other thing, do you have sewer rent, sewer rents?
Just that the law was...
Two thousand and eighteen.
Now, I know, but what's that actual rate?
The new rate will be dollars more, so it's going to be $80.64 inside. And, Lord, we're going to have to get the calculator up in the math, I'm sorry.
What was that inside?
Seventy-nine sixty-four. So I have to... You know, from one and a half times to the outside rates, but I can't see it for it.
But what was the outside rate?
It's going to be $80.
That's inside?
Yep.
Could be one twenty...
Ninety-six. One twenty ninety-six.
Plus a dollar fifty.
Oh, she had it.
Oh.
Stop, the good rate rate was only for her.
I don't see, I don't see the draft. No, the draft wasn't. It just doesn't include the number.
Yeah, it's not, it won't. Local law, two of 2018, this is definitely sewer rent, or something like that. Yeah, I know you're not saying it.
Ben's thinking.
Yeah, you're not. Not seeing sinking, it's drop-by sink issue. Do you want me to go back?
But you said that on the beginning. Please, please grab them, so we can introduce them.
Thank you. I was going to get two for the public hearing. But I think have all the members...
No, she just mailed it.
It's given out of her package, it's going to be there.
Oh, and drop it?
Yeah. But it shouldn't do, it shouldn't be parqueted that, but I'll try it somewhere. So you have it now?
Yeah, I can read it out. If there's a draft on it, yes. So local law, two of 2018, local law established sewer rent rates being enacted by the Board of Municipalities of the Village of Trumansburg as follows, section one hundred and eighty, this local law shall be required to the local law for the establishment sewer rent rates. Section two, where properties located in the Village of Trumansburg, the village, the amount of the quarter to charge per unit is hereby established as $80.64. For properties located outside the village, the amount of water to charge per unit is at a rate of $1.96. $1.96. This actually, this contract shall be due in April, advance, the office, on Thursday, February, May, August, and November of each year. Sewer rents become to be one hundred and then the four months in quarter of the day they will be pro-rated on the build, including the next, see the court. In the event any sewer rent shall not be paid within thirty days of the date of start rent is due, it shall be considered delinquing, and the penalty in amount equal to 100% of the amount of the build should be added to the amount. Section three, effective date, this local law shall be concluded immediately, compiling with the Secretary of State.
All right, so we don't need to do anything to introduce that, it was just introduced. When Tammy gets back, we'll set the public hearing for the next month's meeting, I hope.
I don't know where you're setting it, so it's one...
You're right, we're setting it for the...
Twenty-third? Yes, I just left it in there, just now.
And Tammy put it...
It's the weird, right? Takes a while. Yeah, so it was the twenty-third?
Twenty-third at six, everybody makes six. Because I think this is the... We don't have other business, right? How long is it before? So Ben found it. Are you ready?
I can't hear you, we're interrupting you.
You're doing the new rates. And we are now setting a public hearing.
Okay. So be April twenty...
Monday, April twenty-third at 6:00 p.m. It will be... Just to clarify, that will also be in the package. Just to clarify, we're increasing rates for sewer by a dollar a quarter. But in order to do that, it actually takes a lot of, you know, a local law to change sewer rates.
It was twenty-three.
So we will be having a public hearing on that local law to formalize it on Monday, April the twenty-third at 6:00 p.m. Right here. It's the strangest thing, the law to change sewer rates, but no one...
Well, I just put it on here, I thought it was back.
All right, item number nineteen, we've got some bills to pay, I believe. Unless there's any other business in there.
There's another, there's another public hearing here? Or is that what?
It's probably the budget public hearing. I just put them in there because sometimes people question whether things have been posted, and I want it to be available to all of the in-person, someone.
Okay, yes, we can go ahead and pay those. That was in there. The law was in there.
So bills, we have a general fund abstract. In the amount of $161,406.23.
A move that we pay from the general fund, $161,406.23.
Motion in a second. Discussion or anything in the abstract? Hearing, none, all in favor of paying the general fund abstract, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? EMS billing, paying billing revenue to the village in the three towns and a credit bureau. Interesting. So what is that? That's a good question. I'm glad she knows. We don't want to say who that is.
No, but is this the...
Maybe we can get a bigger order.
Hey, I can't suppose it's her. It's a... It's a collection from a company.
EMS billing abstract in the amount of $20,845.54. End of second, any discussion? Taking the bill right there.
Just to let you guys know, we had, we have had those before. But yeah, like two, maybe a year, so...
All right, there's no further discussion, then, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to need you to back up because everybody's talking and I couldn't hear. So I didn't know where the motion came from.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Water fund abstract in the amount of $39,739.84.
A move that we pay $39,739.84 from the law.
Second.
So what does Guy charge $15 to you?
That is splitting up bills from description.
Or just between?
Yeah, because sometimes he puts a lot of things in one day.
Yes.
Yes.
The answer is nothing.
Yeah.
We're working on the new bill.
All those in favor of paying the waterfront abstract in the stated amount, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Sewer fund abstract in the amount of $26,042.66.
A move that we pay $26,042.66 from the sewer.
Second. Motion in a second, any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Pay those bills, please. Capital improvement water well project in the amount of $84,471.05. All of that going to the contractor, the general contractor for the water project.
A move that we pay $1,471.05 from the water well.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Capital improvement wastewater treatment plant project. There was some question about this number.
We're, we still have a hundred, an outstanding balance from Hubbard to be built to us for over $100,000, so I suggest that we go ahead and pay this. We could have enough room left on what we still owe them to have some others.
Then the dollar amount is $276,327.05, all of which was from the installation of the new belt rest.
I move that we pay for the wastewater treatment project, plant project, $276,327.05.
Second. Motion in a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Last abstract is trusted agency in the amount of forty thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty-two cents. Looks like two months' worth of health consortium premium. Those are the two biggest numbers. A move that we pay that abstract. A motion and a second.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Oppose, abstentions. All right, item number nineteen, twenty, item number twenty, second public comment period. The crowd was shrunk, we should go to like twelve minutes. We'll call it fifteen minutes, and then just make it, I don't know, ready to go. Yes, sir?
Mark Capel again, just comment on the safe, what's it called, safe spot?
Safe spot.
Yeah, we lived in Kalamazoo, Michigan for a number of years, and they actually had that also in private residences, which may also be something my life considered, we talked to the chamber.
How do you vet individual homeowners?
Probably the same way you vet the owner of a business. You know, there would have to be some vetting, but they were able to do it with Kalamazoo. You had on the window, there was, on the window of the house, there was some kind of animal, it was a...
But careful, they won't enter.
Yeah, yeah, they're one street. And you get brownies at our house.
Where do you live? You need to go in the village, I can get you, just in case.
Anyway, it seemed, it seemed worth their, however they did it, but they would all probably still be a problem, there might be some liability, what all they can do as well. You know, if you're going to have a lot of travels, probably going to be on Wick Street or over on, you know, Kiuga or Washington or someplace like that, not necessarily, you know, between, correct?
Yeah.
And the little vents and you give them...
Right. Good point.
Well, you have to have more than one per street, probably. But if they're not, if they're not home, then no one else is around, well, if you didn't have them, there still wouldn't be.
Yes, Jezz.
Jezz, I'm sorry, I have a couple of questions about whether the zoning revision committee be open to the public for, to listen.
Yes.
Thank you.
It'll be up to the committee chair whether they accept any comment from attendance, but it'll be, I think, if we're talking about a committee of nine, ten, eleven people, it's either going to have to be here at the fire hall. So yes, it will be open to public attendance.
Okay, the next question was, is this sewer rate increase going to be it for the sewer treatment plant when the bond comes through, or will it be an additional rate?
Bond is due, I mean, that's incorporating that rate.
Right, no, so it won't be a few months ago.
It, I can say that it won't, any sewer rate will not be impacted by the bond, I can't say if the contract goes up next year, I mean, there's other costs that are associated with this, but no, the intent is not to have it go up. And if by any chance we get some more users on it, it will actually go down.
Okay, and then the third question or comment that I had is, I'm not sure a lot of people new to the community know that there's a basic star, you know, reduction in your taxes or the enhanced star or veterans. And I don't know how best to, that should be, that information should be disseminated. Probably the wrong person to ask on the board, because that reduces the in, tax income to the village, but...
Information, probably the right person to ask, it's actually the lender in the real term are primarily responsible for performing.
Oh, they are?
New buyers, buyers, things.
Okay.
A good real estate attorney, a good buyer's attorney will also let them know. But I know that it's kind of a, when you start talking about the real estate industry, it's considered best practices, at least in New York State, as familiar with other states, but in New York State, it's considered best practices for a buyer's attorney, and when they take some of these accredited buyers representative classes, they talk about making sure that your buyer knows what might be available to them. Certainly when a buyer finds out, or when a buyer applies for VA financing and those kinds of things, the agent is really supposed to kind of guide them a little bit on that. Not really legal, but it's best practices. Municipally, I'm not quite sure how we would...
Can you put in the welcome package? Because it's just a...
I've heard it.
But it's not, I think it's bigger than, like, new people, I've got to tell you, it took me forever to find out, and I've lived here for thirty years.
Yeah, I do, kids and all, the veterans, they have no idea that they can apply for that twenty thousand dollar, you know, exemption if they're about...
And it takes about three minutes.
Exactly.
I don't know, but if you don't know, it won't, because we do get calls about that.
I thought, I talked to veterans on that month, I thought that was voted down, that was the school that's...
The first time we voted that, they did, they subsequently passed it.
I was starring in, in the star. I mean, the applications go to the county, to the state, not to the village, but I mean, I have...
The sets, right?
Right.
You can certainly include those kinds of links to the application forms and information on it, that's a good idea.
Especially if you come from our state.
Is that a store, Trumansburg, or?
Yes.
Yes, sir?
I'm happy, we come as a plan review and zoning revision committee, a one minute commitment.
That's the, I think it would make the most sense to have people who work most closely with developing the comp plan, to then...
Yeah, I was just wondering about the fees and the local bills.
That's, that's good. We, if they survive, the comp plan would be processed and we should, we should... Yeah, they should be congratulated and encouraged to...
Maybe round of applause, I'm going to do so.
Any other public comment, questions? Anyone? You were...
What do you mean? I'm tired of you telling me I don't know.
Should be used to me. All right, if there's no further public comment, then I would make the motion to go into executive session to discuss all this personnel. All in favor?